We had several of these first reading planning ordinances in committee last week. Does anybody need them read at this time? Of course, they will be read tonight at 6:00. But does anyone have any questions about them? Councilman Ledford.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Item B, actually, case number 2018-017. There will be conditions added to have an alternate verdict at 6:00.
At 6:00?
Yes, sir.
Alrighty, thank you. That's B, 6B. Anything else?
If I may, item D will be asking for a table. Item D?
Item D, he's asking to table tonight at 6:00. Councilman Oglesby.
Yes, Mr. Chair. Item H, I'll be asked, I am requesting a deferral till March the 6th. And I've asked Councilman Ledford to handle that for me as I will not be here because I will be at an EPA meeting at the Southside Community, I don't want to say it, Rec Center, Youth and Family Development Center tonight at 6:00.
Okay, thank you. Anything else, resolution, I mean ordinances on first reading, excuse me? If not, we'll move on to resolutions. Madam Clerk, would you please read 7B, Human Resources 7B?
A resolution authorizing the appointments of Sarah Robbins and James McFarland as special police officers unarmed for the Land Development Office to do special duties as prescribed herein, subject to certain conditions.
Any questions? If not, please read 7C.
A resolution authorizing the appointment of Lance McRoy as a special police officer unarmed for the Chattanooga Department of Transportation to do special duty as prescribed herein, subject to certain conditions.
Councilman Gilbert.
I'm just curious, when they said unarmed, they can't have a weapon, but do they get sworn in? Can somebody answer that question? Any police up there?
They do get sworn in.
They do get sworn in? Only it's different is just they cannot carry a weapon, correct?
That's correct. Can they have special duties that are assigned strictly to their function?
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Would you please read 7D?
A resolution approving a special exemptions permit for a residential planned unit development for property located at 1135 McNichol Lane.
Alright, seeing no questions, please read E.
A resolution authorizing the approval of change order number one for CTI Engineers Incorporated relative to contract number W15001101 MBWWTP, detritus rehabilitation and consent decree project for an increased amount of $138,000 for a revised contract amount not to exceed $428,000.
I was about to say something, but I think Councilperson Burres is going to say it for me.
Yes, sir. Anything under Public Works and Transportation was covered last week.
Thank you. In that case, that finishes this part of the agenda, and we will now go into the Economic and Community Development Committee with Chair Erskine Oglesby coming right up here.
Want to welcome everybody to today's Economic and Community Development Committee meeting. Alright, give me a second. Alright, thank you. Today, we were having a follow-up to some questions this council had in reference to the Martin Luther King Extension, too. So, if you please.
Wait until they give me the calendar.
Good afternoon, Chair and Councilmembers.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chair and Councilmembers. We have a presentation today, we're just waiting for that to load. Before we get started with the nuts and bolts of the project, I just wanted to give a general overview and provide the framework that sort of covers why we're even having this conversation. So, we're starting here with this first slide. These are pictures of the Riverwalk. So, more...
Okay.
We're having some issues citywide, for tribes or hair.
Okay, we got it now. Okay, thank you, Ma.
Thank you.
Okay.
Great. More than 30 years ago, the Tennessee River Park Master Plan envisioned a 20-mile passageway meandering along the Tennessee River Valley with adjacent connecting green spaces and trails. The River Park's purpose was to catalyze economic development, encourage healthy activities, and bring our community together. We believe the River Park is one of Chattanooga's most diversely loved spaces. It is a space that all of us enjoy. Part of that vision from the initial River Park Master Plan of 1985 was also a broader thinking of how connection could be enhanced to the Riverwalk so that it could be enjoyed by as many diverse Chattanoogaans as possible. As recently as 2013, longtime design and engineering consultants, Barge Design Solutions, included the rendering you see here of the possible axle extension of ML King Boulevard and their promotional package for all of the work that they had done over the years for the River Park. The current Lou Gehrig's Hollow Trailhead was designed with this direct Boulevard impact in mind.
I don't think so. I think it's a little stressed.
... connectivity issues maybe that...
Can you feel that?
But these discussions around connecting ML King Boulevard to the Riverfront are not new discussions. Creating a direct formal extension of 9th Street to the Greenway on the Riverfront has been talked about for more than 100 years, appearing as part of that, as a part master plan for the city commissioned by famous landscape architect John Nolan in 1911. I'm hearing a little bit of a bit of a lot of where that is coming from. And then again, in the 2004 downtown plan, a similar Boulevard style street was shown, extended directly to the river at ML King Boulevard. That leads us to 2018, and another discussion about improving public access to the Tennessee River and the Tennessee River Park at ML King Boulevard. This project can be more than just a road extension or just adding new infrastructure. This is about creating significant new public space and public access that will benefit all Chattanoogaans. This means providing safe and easy access to the Riverfront for families who are downtown to the Westside who've never had it. This means providing beautiful views to the river for elderly residents at the historic hours and creating new public space gathering spaces for our whole community. This is the rendering of the after. And so, this is about maximizing our natural assets in a responsible, efficient way to transform underutilized vacant property into another major regional attraction for Chattanooga. So, this is how the project started. A chain of fence on a vacant set of parcels blocking our 100-year-old vision to connect ML King Boulevard to the Riverfront. This is the original site plan, and there's a yellow box on the right side of that plan that shows the original site plan. This was a beautiful phase-two development of Ammon Harbor with minor ML King improvement at the intersection, minor landscaping along West 9th Street which is the Godlight Street leading to the Trailhead, and two buildings. You see the two buildings, the hotel and the mid-rise residential, blocking the city's 100-year-old vision to connect ML King Boulevard to the Riverfront. In the eyes of the city, this original site plan does not provide the license to use for the greater public. With this site plan, the Lou Gehrig's Hollow Trailhead would essentially have been a privately-owned park behind, a public park behind a privately-owned residential building with limited public After many discussions, this was a new site plan. A new site plan was created that included the visions of the city's vision of connecting ML King to the Riverfront. It included creating a promenade to the Lou Gehrig's Hollow Trailhead, including enhancing visibility for existing residents, it included enhanced additional parking, safe access for cars, bicycles, pedestrians, and supporting future additional high-quality development in the vicinity. So, this is where our public-private partnership was born. And here are the proposed public-private partnership elements. We're looking at the private investment, which is 46 million, that includes a mid-rise apartment building, $30,000 toward the medical office, $4,000 toward the restaurant, and the mixed-use building is retail. No public funding is proposed to go towards these private investments. The public road infrastructure, we're looking at road lands and acquisition costs, loss of units to develop, and we're looking at interest agreed during construction, we're looking at closing costs, legal costs, Fulton Road improvements, intersection improvements, and ML King extension improvements. And that's where we get to our 3.5 million in public infrastructure. You should have with you a new EIP, Economic Impact Plan. And so, this is basically the red line, which shows what was removed. And so, what you will notice, the difference between the last time we presented to you and what we're presenting today is a 500,000 investment into a project for the affordable housing as they were moved. Review criteria. Once we work through all of the numbers and we figure out what's private investment, what's public investment, again, it's a $50 million project. We're looking at roughly 47 million in private, we're looking at 3.5 million in public. The next thing we do is we review how this fits into the city's overall goal. And so, what we do is we look at the different city goals that have been set by the mayor and the council during the budget session. So, rolling by, it's a $50 million total project, additionally research shows that access to high-quality spaces and parks has significant economic impact and a strong tourism market like Chattanooga. This does not even include the economic impact that would happen with construction of the road. Safer streets, the new ML King Boulevard with lights, bypass, sidewalks, and extended Fulton provide connectivity to the new ML King Boulevard, would provide safer access to the Riverfront. Stronger neighborhoods, this project honors the history of this important part of our community, provides access to open space, and makes access to this community more equitable. Shorter students and stronger families, this project provides employment and access to a place of its original history and will feature a significant piece of hard work to celebrate the place's unique history. And high-performing government, this is part of a multi-year strategic planning effort and demonstrates our ability to make displaced land decisions that support sustainable private sector investments. Once we review how this fits into the city's overall budgeting process, we start looking at financing options. We'll be ECD, C dot finance, we'll sit down and say, okay, we now have a proposed 3.5 million in public infrastructure. How do we fund this? What are our options? We look at cash reserves, we look at bonds, and we look at tax increment financing. So, let's start with the cash reserves. Also, we have roughly $6 million in some of the money that we're currently in cash reserves, but reserved for workforce development programs as they were served, that's restricted for workforce development programs. Workforce programs typically cannot be funded with tests or lines for pilots. And in economic development circles, typically what happens is, if you incentivize a company for job creation and they fail to meet those job creation goals and then we claw back those funds, we typically restrict them and hold them for use in the scenario which the funds were originally given. So, if they were given for job creation, that wasn't met, and we bring them back, we earmark them for job creation for some other project, for some other initiative that happened to come along. So, those are restricted for workforce development. 21st Century Waterfront Fund, this project does fall within the 21st Century Waterfront Plan. We have roughly 3.2 million in cash reserves, and we currently, in this fiscal year, have moved from cash reserves into the operating budget, roughly 4.7 million for Monastory Bridge rehabilitation improvements, and then we've moved roughly 400,000 from reserves to operating to cover the bridge, the panel, bridge panel replacements for the whole best room bridge. So, that leaves us with 3.2 million, roughly, actually 3.2 million in this particular bond, the 21st Century Waterfront Fund. We'd rather not draw that down to zero, we'd rather keep some reserves in that to allow us to have the flexibility that we are going to make repairs or need to have infrastructure than we have that's included in the 21st Century Waterfront Fund. Finally, bonds, we spoke with our bond council who recommended against bond funding for this bigger project given the limited size. He stresses with a legal administrative and marketing fees that would be associated to bonding of this project. And our bond council said, if you have a developer who's willing to secure his own structure loan to fund this kind of infrastructure, that's, it will happen for you quicker than they actually decide to go the bond route, keeping in mind, who suggested was the project was really small to do a single bond issue for this. So, that left us with tax increment financing, which we think is the best option for this particular project. The tip explained, tax increment financing is a method utilized by local governments to favor community improvements with future tax revenues. A TIP plan is approved by a local government to redevelop an area by paying for the cost of the public required improvements of the future growth of taxes contributed to redevelopment. This is where we sit down and we design or define the planned area. And so, in the image you'll see at the bottom of the screen, you may not be able to see it, but there's some yellow parcels highlighted. Those are the planned areas, and those are the parcels on the left identified with those planned areas. Below it, you will see the bullet points for the apartments, the medical office, the restaurant, the mixed-use building. Those are the development pieces that lead to that increase in property taxes that generates the extra increment that then funds the road improvement. So, those are the pieces that have to happen. So, again, we're looking at total area investment, we're looking at the amount of the TIP, we're looking at up to a maximum of 15-year term. Public schools receive their entire 2.8 million. City of Chattanooga received their 3.2 and debt, be able to pay debt service. 15-year economic plan for the entire development, we're looking at roughly 250 million. TIP payments start with the completion of construction after the parcels have been reimagined, and then all TIP funds will only be spent on public infrastructure and associated infrastructure costs. Construction is already started. Part of what happens with a TIP is, if you have TIP that is funding, the TIP increment is funding a particular development, you don't want that development to have started. But development can start on the other parcels. As a matter of fact, the sooner you get those finished, the quicker the increment's going to be generated, which means the sooner the funds will be available and the sooner the TIP will be paid off. Existing local contractors are already benefiting from this. These are the ones who are already working on the project. The developer is also asked to participate in the city's DVE program. We don't have a formal program, but we do have a list of DVE vendors that we're able to provide the developer. Next, is this a project? So, yes, this is a project according to the way we define it in our TIP policies and the way the statute lays out that generally describes businesses that meet the project qualification. Next slide. The project passes the BUTC test. November 14th, council members, you approve the BUTC test. Essentially, the BUTC is, were it not for this particular TIP or tax increment financing tool, the road would not be happening. And so, we saw the before pictures, what was planned before, two buildings in the middle of what we wanted to be a road, and then we saw the after, which was, this is the road we wanted, but somebody had to figure out how to pay for it, and that's where we're looking, using public bonds to pay for the road. Again, without the TIP, the developer would not be in a position to finance our improvements that we requested. All of the TIP costs associated with the construction will go towards the infrastructure, and the proposed improvements to the roads have not been. Additional BUTC, legal language here, it's not a legal requirement, Tennessee statutes, it's a policy requirement that we have that gives us another lens through which we look at different projects. And then again, the developer did, in his application, include an affidavit that basically said, were not for this TIP, he would not be funding this kind of road or this type of road improvement. Again, council members, you approved on November 14th that this was not listed in the capital improvement plan and would not be added to it in the future. That's where we have this, keeping in mind, we have a master plan that talks about connecting other boulevards to the Riverfront throughout the city, and so, at some point down the road, we should consider how we look at funding those. But for this one, it's not in the capital improvement plan, so we had to find some other way to fund it. TIP policy guide. We essentially went through and looked at our existing policies and how our existing policies impact this particular development project and this plan, tax increment financing program. So, the TIP program is primarily intended for economic development projects that provide improvement in lighted and underutilized areas in the city of Chattanooga and in other properties designated by city council and the Hamilton County Commission. You're free to remove, you're free just to say it's for lighted, you can say it's just for underutilized, you can say it's just for whatever we want to use it for. But our policies that were approved in 2015 give this council the flexibility to use it in any of those areas, lighted, underutilized, or any area of the city that's designated in any of our plans, any of our properties. And then the next paragraph talks about, members of Hamilton County Commission and Chattanooga City Council as qualified elected representatives are not only vested with the final authority to approve TIP transaction districts, but are also in the best position to determine the relative priorities of the proposed infrastructure improvements and related community benefits from a public policy standpoint. Our next policy guideline talks a little bit about tax increment financing. Econom... We're going back. Thank you, thank you. Okay, and so, we put this slide up just to talk about the fact that we're able to use this for public infrastructure and other improvements related to that development under the Tennessee statutes. That's in our policy. Next slide, please. Terrific. Okay, we're talking about the approval process today. So, again, IDB meeting in November, and basically, the IDB reviewed the application, all of the attachments, the developers' qualifications to complete the project. November 14th, we brought both items before, the city council, city council approved the BUTC, BUTC, and then it's not included in the capital plan. We had two application review committee meetings, we had members that ranged from a banker to a community foundation representative to a retired judge. And so, they reviewed all of the documents, the process to date, they asked all those questions that everyone has been asking. Does this meet the BUTC? Is this a qualified project? How do the numbers flush out? How did we get to this? Did C dot review the cost of the road improvement? They asked all those questions, and all those questions were answered before it was brought to the IDB for public hearing. Public hearing was held on January 8th. There was a delay. We came back and had a public hearing yesterday. And so, essentially, all of the items that, the issues that were raised in those public hearings and the questions that have come in from them, we've incorporated and we feel like we've answered in all the slides of the presentation. And so, the next one. We were hearing from people that, you know what, residents from West Side really don't care about going to the Riverfront. We heard that. So, staff, you know, staff said, you know, let's go ask, let's go ask. So, this woman's Angela. Angela and her two boys, ages five and a half and 10. They live in the West Side. And Angela normally takes her boys to the playground and college and courts. She told staff she'd like to have the opportunity to take them to see the water and to have another place to play. And she added that when her boys are in school, having the ability to take a quiet walk along the Riverfront, along the river alone would be good for her home and peace of mind. And so, again, this is not just about a road extension, this is not just about adding public infrastructure. This is about creating a new significant piece of public space that will benefit all Chattanoogaans. It's about maximizing our natural assets, and it's about completing a 100-year-old vision to connect 9th Street all the way to a Greenway along the Riverwalk. And this public-private partnership may be our very last opportunity to do that on this particular site. And so, with that, I will open for questions from the council members.
Thank you. Councilman Henderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think we got it. Let's start this over. I like doing it. Councilman Henderson, please. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Trina, thank you. I believe this presentation has answered a lot of the questions that I had from last week or the week before. A couple of questions that I have, and one that you alluded to on this slide presentation, I'm not sure which one it was, but you made the statement that all the revenues generated from the planned area would be used for public infrastructure.
That is, that is correct.
Okay, and so, my question is this, in the Black Creek TIP, which I know most people don't even like to talk about, there's one sentence in that Economic Impact Plan that sort of designates or clarifies that, and it says basically, in the Black Creek TIP, that proceeds of tax increment financing would be used exclusively to pay public improvements, is what they have. What I would like to see in our Impact Plan is a sentence that defines that all of the revenues generated from the planned area would be used exclusively for public infrastructure. And I think that would help define the fact that all the money will be going into public infrastructure and not into building infrastructure. Any other... Is that something that we can...
Yes, I will follow up with our TIP council to have that over.
This is the foolish one. Oh, good, thank you. So, one other thing, we've heard a lot of discussion about whether this project qualifies for TIP or not. And here again, you did lay out, you know, that this project qualifies for TIP. One of the things in our policy that, as I was combing through, I found on the first page, A1 of our TIP application, it basically addresses three areas, economic development, block removal, or pursuit of community plan and policy. And it asks, will the proposed project further the pursuit of the existing community plan and policy? Which, as you pointed out, and you brought it to the children, I was aware of, but also was able to dig up a resolution that a city council in 2002 passed, a resolution involving the 21st Century Waterfront Plan, which I guess made it a record of the policy. So, can I infer from the question on this front page of the application that's included, and is included in our TIP policy, that if it, you know, is a pursuit of a community plan, that makes it qualify for a TIP as well?
Yes, sir, it does.
And then, I guess my last question has to do, you did say that C dot did a review of the cost of the road, of the construction of the road. Do we have, do we have those estimates? Can we, we just maybe to, I mean, I'm not sure if he has them, with the cost projections of the road, we actually did a cost estimate, correct? Of what we thought the road, let's just say if we did.
We did, I had our transportation engineer, Mr. Heinzler, several weeks ago, blindly do an estimate without, the development estimate of their own costs. I didn't show... do an estimate without, the development estimated their own costs. I didn't share that information with him. Only can we say, please apply, you know, your own estimate. It's at a conceptual level at this point, and I was personally very pleased because it's an actual unit cost. I don't have the actual document here, but if you'd like to see the whole of it, break it down, I'd have to share it. What he did was, took a recent bid from two contractors that we had had, and applied those unit costs, asphalt, trees, concrete curbs, gutter, and applied, again, at a conceptual level, we could still measure what we had, but it's still a conceptual level, he was able to measure certain series and volumes and quantities, and created a tab that generated the cost for Fulton Street and MLK combined. And what came from that analysis was, the contractor bids, one of them is a little better than the other, one of them is a little bit higher, so we calculated the base on both of those. So we've got min and max and an average, and it ends up being that the cost of the road improvements for the lower-cost contractor would be about 1.77 million dollars, and the cost of the improvements, again, estimated at a conceptual level based on areas and quantities, at a high level of 1.279. I may be giving you too many numbers. I feel like the average is a good number there, and that's 1.176. That's for Fulton and MLK combined, based on the size of the work that we estimated, given the level of drawings that we had. That does include pretty much everything, so we're costing enough headlines. So it's a good estimate, what we tried to do. We did what it needed to do, which I would expect the developer included soil, we put all costs of engineering, all of that. That should be an apples-to-apples comparison. And that excludes the intersection, which we think there has been over $100,000 reasonable for the modifications that the intersection would be necessary at that application. So if you add $100,000 to our estimate, you've got 1.276, this last number, this second last number I'll give you, 1.276 million, our estimate, which compares to their overall 1.1. So we think that if we did it ourselves, it would cost more than if it was done this way. And I'm happy to share the details, if you want to see the details.
Thank you. Thank you, Ma. I have one last question that I will have. Well, maybe a little odd question. You said the term of law is up to a maximum of 15 years.
That's correct.
So that means we can believe this could be made awesome?
Meant to say. Absolutely. Meant to say it would make it be awesome.
Does that mean that then, when...